Hare Rama, Hare Rama, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, 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 Hare, Hare. Om Agnayana Timirandasya Jnana Shalakaya Chakshuroon Militam Yena Tasmayi Shri Guruvay Namaha. Shri Chaitanya Manu Vishnam Stapitam Yena Bhutale Swayam Rupa Kadhamayam Dadati Swapa Dantigam. Vandeham Shri Guru Shri Uta Padakamalam Shri Gurun Veshnavam Sha. Shri Rupam Sagrijatam Sahaganaragunatanvitam Tam Sadhivam. Sadvaitam Savadhutam Parijana Sahitam Krishna Chaitanya Devam. Shri Radha Krishna Padaam Sahaganalarita Shri Vishakhanvitam Sha. He Krishna Karuna Sindhu Deenabandhu Jagatpati Khope Shakopi Kakaanta Radha Kanta Navastute. Raptakanchana Gauranghi Radhe Vrindavaneshvari Vishbhanosute Devi Pranamami Hari Priy. Vancha Kalpadaru Vyashcha Kripasindubai Vacha Patithanam Bhavanibhyo Veshnavibhyo Namu Namaha. Shri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nityananda Shri Advaita Kadadhara Shiva Sadhigaurabhaktavrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama, 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 Hare, Hare. Namavum Vishnu Padayakrishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shima Devakthi Vedanta Swamenitinaaminne. Navasthe Saraswate Deve Gauravaane Pracharinne Nirvisheshashunyavadi Paashatideeshatarine. Mookam Karoti Bacharam Pangum Langayate Girum Yat Krpatam Ahm Vandeshi Gurundeenatharanam. Paramanandamadhum Shri Chaitanya Ishvaram. Hare Krishna, welcome all of you to this Chaitanya Charithamritasession. It is from Chaitanya Charithamritamritam Madhyalila Chapter 12. Jaya Jaya Shri Chaitanya Jaya Nityananda Jaya Advaitachandra Jaya Gaurabhaktavrinda. Jaya Jaya Shri Chaitanya Jaya Nityananda Jaya Advaitachandra Jaya Gaurabhaktavrinda. Jaya Jaya Shri Chaitanya Jaya Nityananda Jaya Advaitachandra Jaya Gaurabhaktavrinda. All glories to Lord Chaitanya, all glories to Lord Nityananda, all glories to Advaitachandra and all glories to all the devotees of Lord Chaitanya. So today, this festival will be celebrated shortly in the temple on this coming Sunday. So we thought that we can revisit this particular chapter, chapter 12, which we had read and heard earlier about cleansing the Gundicha Temple. So we need to understand that Chaitanya Mahaprabhu compares the Gundicha Temple to the temple of our heart. And that it is covered in dust, it has straws, it has sand, it has dust particles which can be cleaned. And also then there are fine dust particles which can, which may not be cleaned in the first cleaning. So Chaitanya Mahaprabhu cleaned for the second time, then he washed it very thoroughly, he inspired everyone to clean the temple very, very nicely. Why? So then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu shows by this whole pastime that when the heart becomes clean, then what happens is that everything becomes very peaceful, very beautiful. And then that is, the heart is then ready to receive the Lord. The Lord is already there, but then Lord also peacefully resides. If you read the, one of the purports in the chapter, Prabhupada says that because of such so many unwanted desires in the heart, like desire for sense enjoyment, desire for doing frutive activities, karma kant or desire for pursuing jhana, jhan yoga, for pursuing ash tang yoga, for whatever. So by pursuing all that, the Lord becomes disturbed in the heart. So by performing, by cleaning our heart of all these unwanted things, the heart becomes peaceful even if we are in the material world. And Lord then peacefully resides and then everything is very, very blissful. So we'll go through this particular pastime. And then there are certain lessons that we have learned from our great wonderful devotees. Shilpa Prabhupada and other devotees and we'll be sharing some of those lessons. So these lessons, some of these lessons are in spiritual leadership. So those devotees who are already in leadership position or those leaders who will become future leaders can, you know, take lot of cues from this. So there are many valuable lessons in this particular.
We will just wait for a minute. I think our coordinator forgot to start the Zoom. Just a moment.
Hare Rama, Hare Rama, 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 Hare, Hare. So in this particular chapter, chapter 12, there are many wonderful lessons. And so one is for the internal purification as we were discussing, so that it becomes very calm and quiet. And the, we don't experience the problems and the disturbance that is usually felt with the material world. And then it becomes the proper place for the Lord to come and reside peacefully. And then we can progress very, very nicely in our spiritual life. And then as we were discussing that Chaitanya Mahaprabhu exemplified the spiritual leadership, how he inspired hundreds and hundreds of devotees to come and give their best and everything that they have got in cleaning this particular temple. So there are many lessons, leadership lessons. So those of devotees who have some services, important services, leadership roles in Iskhn, I mean there's lot to learn from this and those who will become future leaders, also there is, we can prepare ourselves with this. So we are looking at this particular section versus seventy-two to one, verses one thirty-five. I think we are not covering all the verses in this particular section. One thirty-five, by the way, has a very beautiful, amazing purport. And I'll request devotees to take time out, today it's already quite late, maybe tomorrow, just go through the beautiful purport of one thirty-five. Prabhupada very beautifully summarizes the whole, you know, the pastime and the essence, the spiritual significance of this particular pastime.
Prathamme Kashi Mishre Prabhu Bolaila Padichapatra Sarva Bhavme Bolanana Nila. Shri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, first of all called for Kashi Mishra, then for the superintendent of the temple, then for Sarva Bhavma Bhattacharya. So today we are discussing, as Prabhu was telling, we are discussing about cleansing of the Gundicha Temple. So this Gundicha Temple is the place where the Jagannath Ratheyatra goes. So Jagannath from his temple goes to this Gundicha Temple and otherwise this temple is, like the seva archana does not happen in this temple. So throughout the year, the temple is just left like that. And it is only this time that Jagannath comes, so the temple is geared up, prepped up. So we can imagine that for one year, and it's a huge, huge temple. So we can imagine that what would be the condition of that and we will see how Mahaprabhu is cleaning. Tenejana Pashe Prabhu Hasiya Kohila Gundicha Mandira Majan Seva Maginila. When these three people came before the Lord, he begged them for permission to wash the temple known as Gundicha. So he is seeking the supreme Lord whom everyone values so much in Jagannathpuri. He is also what it is mentioned that he is seeking permission. So he is setting the standard, he is seeking the permission, so he is setting the standard for all of us. And we will see especially in this section, there are lot of seva lessons. So if we want to do some service, what should be my attitude, what should be my mindset and in what consciousness do I approach the service? So this Gundicha Temple which is located two miles northeast of Jagannath Temple, as Shilpa Prabhupada mentions that. And so the cleansing would begin with Shri Man Mahaprabhu. And it is understood that Gundicha was actually the wife of Indridimna who established this Jagannath Temple. So that temple, the Jagannath Chariot goes. Padichakahay Amisaba Sevak Tomara Ye Tomara Ichcha Sei Kortavya Amara.
Upon hearing the Lord's request for permission to wash the Gundicha Temple, the Padicha, the superintendent of the Jagannath Temple said, "My dear sir, we are all your servants. Whatever you desire is our duty to perform." So the Lord was actually seeking permission, but the superintendent of the temple said, "Well, Lord, we are your servant. Whatever you desire is our instruction."
Vishesh Raja Raagya Hana Che Amare Prabhu Raghya He Se Ishgrakari Bare. The king gave a special order for me to do without delay, whatever your lordship order. So that is what I was telling that Mahaprabhu had such a stature there. You know that the king personally has instructed everyone that whatever Mahaprabhu says, you should do without delay and yet he is seeking permission. Tomar Yogya Sevana Hai Mandira Majana Ei Ek Lila Kora Ye Tomara Mana.
My dear Lord, washing the temple is not service befitting you. Nonetheless, if you wish to do so, it is to be accepted as one of your pastimes.
Kintu Ghata Samarjani Bohut Chahiye Agya Dehaji Sabai Hani Diye. To wash the temple, you need many water pots and brooms. Therefore, order me, I can immediately bring all these things to you. Nudanek Shat Ghata Shat Samarjani Padicha Aniya Dilaa Prabhu Richa Jani.
As soon as the superintendent understood the desire of the Lord, he immediately delivered one hundred new water pots and one hundred brooms for sweeping the temple. So all, of course, when we are planning some service, we should arrange all the necessary equipment, ingredients, whatever is required for the service well in advance, so that the service can happen unimpeded and very wonderfully. So this is a section of resource mobilization.
And here is our first seva lesson from this particular section. Start with permission, gather all you need, with a clear blueprint, you will surely succeed. So Mahaprabhu has taken first the permission and second is resource allocation. So he has gathered all whatever he needs and he has a clear blueprint in terms of how he is going to execute this service. And we will see how he succeeds and how if we have permission, permission also means blessings in our case. When we seek permission from our seniors, we seek their blessings and they empower us. And because of that, the mercy flows and then everything is arranged and we will succeed. Aaradine Prabhate Lana Nijagana Shri Hastesebara Angge Le Pila Chandana.
Aaradine Prabhate, so early in the morning, the next day, the Lord took his personal associates with him. Lana Nijagana, so all his personal associates he took with him. Shri Hastey with his own divine hands, sabara angge le pita, le pila chandana. So with his own divine hands, the Lord smeared sandalwood pulp on their bodies. So this is the welcome, Lord is welcoming everyone who is coming to serve along with him, under him to clean the Gundicha Temple. So seva lesson, a leader's task is to prepare and strengthen, guiding the team with care. So body and mind are ready for the challenges that dare. So very nice seva lesson. So what is the leader's task is to prepare the team, strengthen the team, inspire the team, guide the team with great care. Then what happens is then each team member, his body and mind, they are ready, whatever challenge may come, we will do it.
Actually this reminds me like in our temple also when there are festivals, like for example Janmashmi would be coming shortly or Ratheyatra festival. So generally in our team, so we see to it that all the devotees who are the volunteers there, like for example I take care of Shuddhisitva, so whatever number of volunteers are there, we, the leader need to see to it that the volunteers are fed properly and that they have chanted their rounds. So you know, so body and mind is ready for that seva. Because otherwise what may happen is that it is midnight and on Janmashmi night, the volunteers don't get time to chant itself. So that is the leader's thing, that he takes care of the body, of the mind, of the personal necessities of the, of the subordinate, so that the person is ready and enthusiastic to do that service. And in current time, we see like lot of corporates also. So they want people to stay, they want employees to stay in the office for longer hours, but then they provide gym and they provide food and so many extra amenities to take care of the personal need of the person. Shri Hastey Dilasabar Ei Ek Ma Jani Sabagalaana Prabhu Chali La Apani.
He then gave each devotee a broom and with his own hands, so he gave, he had all the brooms, you know, already arranged. So with his own hands, he was giving every devotee a broom, taking all of them personally with him, the Lord went to Gundicha.
Gundicha Mandire Gelaa Kari Te Marjana Prathamme Ma Janilaana Kari La Shodhana. In this way, the Lord and his associates went to cleanse the Gundicha Temple. At first, they cleanse the temple with a broom. So now here we are seeing that the Lord is personally going along with the associates. It's not like, okay, brooms, we will keep it, pick it up and go and do the cleansing. Lord himself is going along with that to clean the temple. Bhitarah Mandira Opal Sakala Ma Jila Simmasana Ma Ji Punas Thapana Kari La.
The Lord cleansed everything inside the temple very nicely, including the ceiling. He then took up the sitting place, the simhasan, cleansed it and again put it in its original place. So the description begins that with Lord entering and he is cleaning everything very nicely, not just the floor, not just the walls, but even the ceiling. And then he took up where the simhasan, where actually the Lord will, Lord Jagannath, when he will travel all the way from the temple and come to Gundicha Temple, so where he would be seated, so that simhasan area also he cleaned and placed it in its original location.
Chhotaboda Mandira Kailaa Marjana Shodhana Pachetayche Shodhilashri Jagamohana. Thus the Lord and his companions cleansed and swept all the temples' buildings, big and small. And finally cleansed the area between the temple and the kirtan hall. So generally like if there is a huge temple premises and then there are many small temples also, or many small other structures also. So it is mentioned that Lord only, not only cleansed the main temple where the, where Jagannath would come and reside, but he cleansed everything, the entire temple building. Charidike Shat Bhakta Samarjani Kore Apani Shodhenaprabhu Shikhanasabare.
Indeed, hundreds of devotees were engaged in cleansing all around the temple. And Shri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was personally carrying out the operations just to instruct others. So this is a great example for the leaders, for the Acharyas. So Acharya does it himself, he performs devotional service himself, he performs the activities himself. There is a physical act that is done and by seeing that others feel very inspired, not only they learn how to do it, but they feel very inspired to do it themselves. So here we see that Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was personally carrying out the operations for siksha, so that he is teaching others and then all the devotees, hundreds of devotees are engaged. So leadership in action is at the core. Do the work first, then open the door, inspiring others to strive for more.
So leadership is action, so leadership is not only words, leadership is not only instruction, but in action, like how Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is teaching, do the work first and then open the door. So you start doing and then you invite others to join you and that way we inspire everyone to do more and more. Premulas Ashodhenala Yena Krishna Namaha Bhakta Gaana Krishna Kahi Kari Nijakama. Shri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu washed and cleansed the temple in great jubilation, chanting the holy name of Lord Krishna all the time. Similarly, all the devotees were also chanting and at the same time performing their respective duties. So very important, though it is very fine point, but important point, so one here we are talking about the enthusiasm. You know, he is not considering that, oh, it is a menial service and you know, like I have to do and why I have to do, no. He is doing it in great jubilation and what else, he is continuously chanting the holy names of Krishna. So the devotees are also similarly, so the devotees acquire the mood of their leader. So the devotees are also very enthusiastic, utsaha, so they are very enthusiastic and they are also chanting and everyone is happily engaged in this service.
Premulas.
Premulas. Enthusiasm brings excellence, serve with vigor and zeal. Pour your energy while chanting Lord's name and the team's power will reveal. So when we are enthusiastically with vigor, with zeal, we are doing that and remembering the supreme Lord. So that is the key, that is the essence. Enthusiasm may be there for so many things, but am I remembering Krishna while, you know, exhibiting that enthusiasm? And then the whole team becomes charged with devotional ecstasy.
And Shilpa Jeevagoswami also explains that whenever we are doing any service, any pooja archana, in context to pooja and archana he has mentioned. And for that matter, when we do any other service with physical body or anything, constantly we chant the holy names, then our consciousness is properly situated. We, we constantly naturally remind ourselves that we are doing this as a service to the Lord, as a service to the veshnavas and we are properly situated.
Dhuli Dhushara Tanu Dekhi Te Shobana Kaha Kaha Asho Jalay Kari Samarjana.
The entire beautiful body of the Lord was covered with dust and dirt. In this way, it became transcendently beautiful. At times, when cleansing the temple, the Lord shed tears and in some places, he even cleansed with those tears. Dhuli Dhushara Tanu Dekhi Te Shobana. So because Lord was grooming and, you know, engaged in cleaning everywhere, so all the dust arose and it, some of it settled on the Lord. And Lord is so beautiful that even after all the dust, he is looking very attractive. And because Lord was overcome with ecstatic emotions, so he would, he was crying. And at some places, there were so many tears that with that itself he was cleaning. Even in the dirt, the Lord's form shone bright, reminding us that true purity lies in devotion, not in outward sight. So when we look at a devotee, we look for, you know, his exterior sometimes maybe little heart or he may not always agree with us or he may not always praise us or he may not always appreciate us. But we need to develop this, we need to go beyond the outward sight. We need to look at the intent or the devotion that is there in that devotee's heart, his sincerity and his commitment to devotional service. So here we saw that Lord's form was very beautiful, very bright and even if it appeared like that, it was only external.
Bhogamandhir Shodhan Kari Shodhilapragana Sakala Avasakrame Kari La Shodhana. After this, the place where the deity's food was kept, Bhogamandhir was cleansed, then the yard was cleansed and then all the residential quarters, one after the other. So there is a system which is being followed here, it is not that randomly everyone is picking up the broom and whoever, wherever wants and then they are going and cleaning. So there is a proper structure, a proper system, a proper plan and that is what is being described, that everybody first cleaning this and then this and then this and that is how they were moving one after the other. Triadhuli Jhinkur Sabae Ekatrakoriya Bahir Vaselana Phelahe Bahirakoriya.
After Shri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu collected all the straw, dust and grains of sand in one place, he gathered it all in his cloth and threw it outside. So the point is that we, we heard in the beginning that the cleaning of the Gundicha Temple is akin to cleaning our own heart. So when we are cleaning our heart by the process of chanting and by the process of devotional service, by taking prasadam, by taking associates and devotees, by hearing the glories of the Lord, we clean and we clean it in a way that the dust does not again come back. So it is gathered and then is thrown outside, so it is kept far away, so that it does not again contaminate our heart.
Hemata Bhakta Gaana Kari Nijavase Triadhuli Bahir Phelahe Paramahari Shre. Following the example of Shri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, all the devotees, one, what they are doing following, they are in great jubilation. So like Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, they are also very enthusiastic, began to gather straws and dust with their own cloths and throw them outside the temple. So there is no hesitation, you know, the, it's all dust, it is all dirty things, it is all straw and dust etc. And yet they are using their own cloth, so like to collect that dust, they are collecting in their cloth, they are going out and throwing them outside the temple. So that is how Mahaprabhu is teaching by example, Mahaprabhu is setting a system and everybody is in line with their leader, following it. Devotional service thrives when it's structured, set up systems that often, sorry, set up systems that others can follow, creating a path of clarity and order. So devotional service, yes, very good, how can I take my devotional service to the next level? How can I improve my devotional service? So when I place systems there, when there is a proper structure. So a simple example could be that there are kitchens in Iskhn where the recipe is exactly fixed, like how many teaspoons of or tablespoons of what all has to be added, everything is fixed. And the devotees meticulously follow the system and the bhoga comes out just perfectly fine. So if we have structured way of doing things, systematically doing things, so that not only can I do, but if I am not present, still there is system which can take care of everything, so be system dependent that way. So that is what Mahaprabhu is teaching us here.
So one time, one CEO of a quite a good company had visited Iskhn and then he visited some other place. And then he was astounded that the temples are spread all over the world. And how is it that everywhere the same process, correct, four thirty Mangalaarti is there? Then correctly after that, there is Tulasi Arthi, Narasimha Arthi, then correctly after that, there is Tulsi Arthi and then devotees sit for chanting. So he was thinking that wow, that usually the companies struggle not just making the structure, they struggle in implementing those systems and structures. But he, he saw that across the globe, wherever the temples were, you know, they were following this particular process. But he, he saw that across the globe, wherever the temples were, you know, they were following this particular process. The Lord then told the devotees, I can tell how much you have labored and how well you have cleansed the temple. Simply by seeing all the straw and dust you have collected outside. So when devotees become very sincere in performing devotional service and when it is quantified, then the devotee taking care of such devotees would know, yes, okay, so he is performing devotional service very nicely, which means his heart is gradually getting cleansed. So here Lord is quantifying the process, he is quantifying, it is not that, yes, yes, everybody is laboring. Some doing more, some doing less, but Lord is clearly spelling his expectation. That I will know how well you are doing by the amount of uh, straw and dust that you are collecting.
And I guess the same thing, the same spirit, Shilpa Prabhupada. I mean, we are, we must be so grateful to Shilpa Prabhupada that he quantified sixteen rounds of Hare Krishna Bhamantra. Otherwise, I mean, we, we often meet people who say, ha, I continue to chant, man me chanting chalti rehti, you know. I always chant, it is going on, so why should I pick up the mala and chant? But if Prabhupada would not have specified, I am not sure how many of us would have actually chanted sixteen rounds. But because that number is fixed, so we are doing that. So similarly, Shilpa Prabhupada like how uh, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is telling here that I will compare, I will see how much who has collected. And then I will know how much you have labored. So Shilpa Prabhupada would tell, how many books have you distributed, which center has distributed how many books? So like a transcendental competition and setting the targets and goals so that people are also very clear, what are their deliverables.
And we also see that in the temples, there is a system of reporting. We report to the deities, so every morning there is a report, okay, how many books are distributed, that's informed to the deities. Then how much prasadam was distributed. In our temple, we also discuss, we also inform the deities that how many people came and chanted one round. So what is the kind of outreach for the holy names, so all that is informed to the Lord.
The results will speak loud and clear, showing the effort and care used here. Offering each task to the Lord with grace, your devotion shines in every place. So that result, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is focusing here on the result. That I will see how much result or what is the output of your cleansing. Showing the effort and care used here, so whatever, it is directly proportional, so the result is proportional to the effort one puts in. Offering each task to the Lord with grace, so when we are doing devotional service, our efforts and our result. Both are an offering to the Supreme Lord, your devotion shines in every place and with this, our devotion shines.
Even though all the devotees collected dirt in one pile, the dirt collected by Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was much greater.
So which means one pile of everyone's dust together. You know, like so many hundreds of people were there and they all collected on one side and Mahaprabhu was alone. And he collected one side and Mahaprabhu's was greater than everyone's combined, wow.
State expectations thoroughly, so we saw that words uh, before the last one. Effective leadership starts with clarity, express your goals with sincerity. Set expectations clear and true, so everyone knows what to do.
After the inside of the temple was cleansed, the Lord again allotted areas for the devotees to cleanse. So now Lord is delegating, he is giving different responsibilities to different devotees. You go and you clean this chamber, you go and you clean the passage, you go and you clean the lawn. So like that, delegation of responsibility.
And sometimes people ask, what does sincerity mean? Sincerity, we can, we can understand from this particular whole pastime. Sincerity means clean and then clean again and then clean with brooms and clean with hands and then clean with water and then clean and clean and clean. So sincerity means that we don't uh, leave anything undone. Everything, we do it to the best of our ability and very comprehensively. So this temple, the whole pastime, you see that the temple was cleaned very, very comprehensively. It was clean, every, every inch of the temple and with all the possible ways of cleaning. To expand service, delegation is key. By delegating responsibilities and working as a team, we can accomplish much more than we could do alone.
The Lord then ordered everyone to cleanse the inside of the temple very perfectly. Now perfect itself is perfect, but Prabhupada is translating it as very perfectly. By taking finer dust, straws and grains of sand and throwing them outside. So now the focus is shifting to perfection, meticulously performing the service along with each other. So as a team, meticulously you do that, so Mahaprabhu is delegating and Mahaprabhu is ordering to cleanse very perfectly.
Yeah, I was just thinking when I was reading these words. So we are not talking about the cleaning like a maid, you know, I am sure some of our homes, we have seen maids clean. So when maids come and clean, it's like, you know, here, there, somewhat, sometimes, you know, the vessels are not washed properly. Sometimes the house is not groomed properly, sometimes they will mop, but you will see patches of places where the mop has not hit the ground. So it is not that type of cleaning. So the devotee should not be lazy or distracted or they should not be um.
Complacent.
Complacent in um, performing their poor devotional practices. Because then otherwise the temple will not be clean. So now Lord has, the grooming is already done. And now the, Lord has brought the focus to that finer dust, which is still in those crevices and which is hiding in, you know, plain sight. And that has to be also cleaned.
After Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and all the Vashnavas cleansed the temple for the second time. Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was very happy to see the cleansing work. So this meticulous seva, this as- aspiration to do my services perfectly. This brings happiness to the heart of the Supreme Lord. When we, when we are very sincerely, very thoughtfully, very mindfully, very meticulously, when we do the service. Without any distraction and without uh, any desire for our personal, you know, material gain or recognition, et cetera. When we do such service, selfless service, just for the pleasure of the Supreme Lord, that is very pleasing to Krishna.
While the temple was being swept, about a hundred men stood ready with filled water pots. And they simply awaited the Lord's order to throw the water from them.
As soon as Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu called for water, all the men immediately brought the hundred water pot. Which were completely filled and delivered them before the Lord. So they were all so ready on the spot, ready with their water pots, so I was talking about mindful service.
In this way, Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu first washed the main temple. Then thoroughly washed the ceiling, the walls, the floor, the seating place, simhasan, the sitting place and everything else within the room. So if you notice that this is where the Lord started with. Lord started with the main temple and the simhasan he cleaned and then he kept it back. And again, we had come back to the same location again.
It's mentioned thoroughly washed the ceiling, the wall, the floor, like even the ceiling and the walls are completely washed. Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu himself and his devotees began to throw water onto the ceiling. When this water fell, it washed the walls and floor. They were throwing the water on the ceiling and it's coming down and it's washing the walls.
Frankly speaking, I have not seen such cleaning.
Great service comes from attention to detail and collective effort. Work thoroughly and as a cohesive team for maximum impact. So this is what uh, we are learning from this lesson, that how carefully, attention to detail. How tiny little speck of dust they were focusing on and they were removing everything. And all that was possible because they were working as a team. I mean, alone cleansing the Gundicha Temple, yes, for Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, it is definitely possible, but for all of us, it is very, very difficult. So when we work as a team, then we can get much more than we can do alone.
So this serves as a reminder to all the teachers and students of I C V. That that building is just completed and it has, it should, it needs a cleaning like this, thorough. Then Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu began to wash the sitting place of Lord Jagannath with his own hands. And all the devotees began to bring water to the Lord.
Now here it is an important point, like if you will see in the slide at the bottom, what lesson we are learning is also mentioned. So here it says discrimination. So what to do, I mean, what shall I do and what others can do? And what is it that I can do and others may not be able to do it or function it so well, so those things the leader has to do. Or like if there are certain things, like for example, not everybody is a wonderful Kirtaniya. So some of us are gifted with that sweet voice when we do Kirtan. So those people, they should make that discrimination rather than showing the humility that, oh, no, no, I am disqualified, I don't have any, you know. I don't have any qualification to sing. If Krishna has blessed me with something, I utilize it back in his service. So here we see that Mahaprabhu, though he was telling everybody else to wash other areas. But when it came to seating place of Lord Jagannath, he is cleaning with his own hands.
I, with this, this reminds me that when, I am sure when you would have noticed the Abhishekam in the temple. Usually when His Holiness Baniswari Maharaj is present, so he would be the one who will initiate the uh, process of Abhishekam. And like this, so devotees will be standing behind and they will be offering different items to Maharaj. And Maharaj will be, accept those items and then offer it to the Lord in Abhishek possessed.
In team leadership, knowing where to step in is crucial. The leader should take on the key tasks as humility shouldn't hinder one's responsibility. Yes, we have to be humble, but not at the cost of escaping from my own responsibility.
All the devotees within the temple began to wash. Each one had a broom in his hand and in this way they cleansed the temple. So now probably we have lost the count, first they broomed, then they washed, then they broomed, then they washed, multiple times has happened.
Someone brought water to pour into the hands of Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu and someone poured water on his lotus feet. So now devotees, I mean, they are very, like they don't miss the opportunity. So here they are realizing, ah, this is the opportunity to do at least partial Abhishek of Mahaprabhu. So Mahaprabhu would never agree that he is a Supreme Lord and if somebody would say, he will just close his ears and he would say Vishnu, Vishnu, Vishnu and he would run away from that place. But here what devotees are getting the opportunity, that they are on the pretext of bringing and handing over the water to Chaitanya Mahaprabhu. Some of them are pouring it on his hands and some of them are pouring on his lotus feet. So as we can see, they were enjoying, su sukham kartum abhyayam, they were enjoying this part, part of devotional service.
Of course, slightly differently when we were having this uh, Pushpa Abhishek uh, for the uh, temple inauguration, celebrating temple inauguration. So the devotees will offer all the flowers to the Lord, when all the flowers exhausted, then they will look at each other. And then they will pick up those uh, prasad flowers and then they will throw at each other and then outside the altar. The water that fell from the lotus feet of Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was drunk by someone who hid himself. So water was falling on the feet of the Lord, they drank and then he hid, and he hid himself. Someone else begged for that water, where is that Channamrath? And another person was giving that water in charity. Feel the joy of serving, work with a relaxed heart and let the mercy you receive fill you with gratitude. So sometimes, um, you know, sometimes it happens that the service is intense. And there is, we may experience some pressure, anxiety and we may not remain in such a mood. And we may be upset ourselves and we may create, upset others also, we may shout or we may, you know. But here we see that this whole Gundicha Marjanam, um, this whole episode, we see that everybody is blissful. Everybody is happy. They are happy doing the service and the others are also happy in assisting the devotees in doing the service. So and feel the joy of serving. So probably this is a very important seva lesson for those of us who serve together. Work with a relaxed heart and let the mercy you receive fill you with gratitude.
After the room was washed, the water was let out through an outlet and it then flowed and filled the yard outside.
The Lord mopped the rooms with his own clothes and he polished the throne with them also. So Lord used his hands, he used his legs, he used his body, he used his tears, now he is using his clothes. For mopping the rooms, mopping the throne, everything that he has got, he is engaging in Krishna's service. So true service requires complete surrender. One must be willing to relinquish all personal possessions, dedicating everything to the service of the Lord. So Lord in a very humble mood, he is engaging everything that he has got in cleaning the temple of the Lord.
And he has not got many clothes. Those of us who have so many clothes, okay, thikeya, you know, old clothes, it's, it's being used. Lord had only two set, two pair of clothes.
So that consideration is not.
Yeah, he is not even thinking that, you know, what will I wear?
So one must be willing to relinquish, actually one must be willing to great joy, offer what his possessions in dedicating to service to Lord. So maybe this correction we should do.
In this way, all the rooms were cleansed with a hundred water pots. After the rooms had been cleansed, the minds of the devotees were as clean as the rooms. So the whole process or the whole seva of this Gundicha Marjanam. So Gundicha Marjanam, the Gundicha Temple was being cleansed because Jagannath was coming. Similarly, our, all our hearts, if we need to welcome the Supreme Lord in our heart, then we need to clean that also. And when we clean, so all the trina, the dry grass, et cetera, the dust particle. These are all various anarthas which we carry, these are all various material desires which we carry. These are all the opulences which we want to enjoy for ourselves, which we carry in our heart. And when we get cleansed of all these things, then the Supreme Lord can come and reside in our heart.
When the temple was cleansed, it was purified, cool and pleasing. Just as if the Lord's own pure mind had appeared. So I, I'm sure this even uh otherwise you would have experienced this. Sometimes when we clean the house very nicely, put new bed sheets, new pillow covers. The kitchen is very clean and the, the living room is very clean. The front of the house is very clean, everything is very clean. Then there is this natural uh feeling of being purified, cool, everything is there. So here, it is the temple of the Lord. When it has been cleaned very nicely, it appeared as if the Lord's pure mind has appeared there, which is, these qualities are there in that. The service we render cleanses the heart and brings joy. So if by performing devotional service, if you don't feel that our heart is cleansed, which means that we, we see that there is a reduction in our attraction to matter. So the service we render cleanses the heart and brings joy. So if we feel that our, whatever service I am doing, this is not happening, then there is some problem and we should seek guidance. Transforming us with each act of devotion. The service we render cleanses the heart and brings joy. Transforming us with each act of devotion, it purifies us from within and fills our heart with a sense of divine pleasure and peace. So uh, so one second. So in this uh devotees often discuss when they go for deity service. And some, I, I have heard from devotees who sometimes their heart is just filled with so much of joy. And they understand that, you know, that Lord is pleased with their uh offering of that service.
Since hundreds of men were engaged in bringing water from the lake, there was no place to stand on the banks. Consequently, someone began to draw water from a well. So imagine now the lake, there is no place for people to stand. So people, what they are doing, they are going to the well now. And filling in water from there and bringing it there.
And not complaining.
And not complaining, not pushing. Miracha answer, you know, it's my turn now, move, move. They are not doing that, they are just finding some other way to serve.
They are innovative also.
Hundreds of devotees brought water in the pots and hundreds took the empty pots away to fill them up again. So they were all working in cooperation as a unit. They were bringing pots. They were taking away the empty pots and they were refilling again and they were bringing again.
With the exception of Lord Nityananda Advaitacharya Sarupdhamodha Brahmananda Bharati and Parvandandhuri. Everyone was engaged in filling water pots and bringing them there.
So with just these five exception, everyone was sincerely engaged in filling and bringing and carrying water pots and taking it back and waiting to fill the pot without any complaint. Together, they were all serving, happily serving. Integrity is the, sorry, integrity in service is the key. No cheating, laziness or duplicity. Serve with energy, honesty and care and your efforts will truly fare. So they were very, there was an integrity. Honesty, they were not cheating, they were not, you know, cutting corners, they were not sitting and idly kiacha. Okay, Mahaprabhu has seen that I am serving, now I can go and take rest. They were all serving with energy, honesty and care.
Many of the water pots were broken when people collided with one another. And hundreds of men had to bring new water pots to food. So there were so many people were going, filling, coming, some were going with empty pots, somebody comes with full pots and sometimes they crashed with each other and the pots broke. So service demands endurance. Be prepared to handle losses, obstacles and unforeseen circumstances. Knowing that each challenge is an opportunity for growth and deeper commitment. So when we started the construction uh of the two buildings in Isconchanai, so we wanted to inaugurate in January. So uh people were surprised that you inaugurated, just now you started the construction, now you inaugurated in June, how come so fast? And then to some of them, I don't know, no, actually we are delayed by our own standards. So I remember that when the construction was going on, there were times where we wanted certain activity to happen, we had planned. When we started the work, we had a month-wise plan for the next twelve months and we had a week-wise plan and we were looking and then we, and then of course there were uh unforeseen circumstances, there were certain obstacles. Uh sometimes the vendor won't turn up on time, sometimes it rained, unseasonal rain was there. So so many challenges were there, but then we had to hold on and continue. So the service demands endurance.
Some people were filling the pots and others washing the rooms. But everyone was engaged in chanting the holy name of Krishna, Krishna, Hari Hari.
One person begged for a water pot by chanting the holy names of Krishna. Krishna, Krishna. And another delivered the pot while chanting Krishna, Krishna. So these were the, so nobody was speaking. Give me the pot, oh, take here, no. They said Krishna, Krishna, huh, Krishna, Krishna. So that's how they were giving the pot and they were receiving the pot and they were engaged in the service.
Whenever anyone had to speak, he did so by uttering the holy name of Krishna, Krishna. Consequently, the holy name of Krishna became an indication for everyone who wanted something. So if I want some attention, I say Krishna, Krishna. I want to give something Krishna, Krishna. I want to take something Krishna, hey Krishna, walk properly, hey Krishna, you know, like walk properly also doesn't come. Just Krishna and then they will be alert. So like that. Something similar we experience in Brindavan when we go there and the, even the riksha wala, everybody, the beggars on the street, the shopkeeper, oh, radhe radhe, radhe radhe. So like that. So here we are saying, everyone is chanting Krishna, 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 Krishna.
So next time we are serving prasadham, we say Krishna, Krishna, somebody wants. Somebody, somebody say Krishna, don't knock, and somebody wants extra gulab jamun Krishna, Krishna.
Service is best when words align with Krishna's love and truth divine. Steer clear of prajalpa, let every word inspire and fuel your devotion, lift it higher. So when here one word is used as prajalpa, so steer clear of prajalpa. Now what would happen if I am not chanting Krishna? So what would happen if I am not chanting Krishna, if I am not uh thinking of Krishna, if I am not talking about Krishna? I will anyways talk. And in that time, I will do gramyakatha, you know, gossip. So steer clear of prajalpa, let every word inspire. If this is my seva goal, that whatever comes out of my mouth, let it be inspiring others than inspiring me in my service. And that fuel your devotion and lift it higher.
So just a probably a, a pointer towards that is maybe one thing that we can plan is that whenever we visit the temple, we keep all of this in mind. At least that time our consciousness, we should be very, very conscious of the fact that we are in the temple. And so um we are very careful in what we do with our senses, with our mouth, with our words, with our hands, with our legs and with our thoughts, with our speech, with our actions. So we become very conscious, I mean as a practice. So we do that and of course we have orders at home. So when the deity order is open, we are very conscious. Deities are sitting there, they are hearing everything that I am speaking, they are observing everything that I am doing. So that way we become, we become more uh Krishna conscious uh by, you know, so these can be all the cues.
As Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu was vibrating the holy name of Krishna in ecstatic love, he himself was performing the work of hundreds of men. Hundred people ka kam he was doing alone. It's not passion, but prema's glow that fuels true service, helping us grow.
It appeared as though Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu were cleansing and washing with a hundred hands. He approached every devotee just to teach him how to work. So Mahaprabhu's uh level of dakshta or the level of expertise was astounding. And yet, he approached every devotee, any practice should you do like this, you do like this. You know, so.
Training.
Yeah, he, he carefully trained them.
Personal on-the-job training.
The best way to teach skills is through simulation. Android experience leads to genuine expertise.
And we all would have experienced this in our life also, that there are certain things when we are talking about teaching the skill training. So someone if demonstrates in front of us, you know, like this cleansing seva, so if Mahaprabhu wanted it in a particular manner, in a particular order and if he can either make us do or show us how to do and then we become an expert. So that way it is very good if we can get on the job training, on the seva training.
That we have learnt like this, we to apply tilak to veer dhoti, to serve prasadham. There's so many things, to chant japa. So we see that, you know, first time we would have done, somebody would have showed us, how do you hold the beads? You don't know. So how to hold the beads, so everything, so much is taught to us. Prasamsana. When he saw someone doing nicely, the Lord praised him. Yeah, brush, we say in Hindi, prashansa, pras, prasamsa, pras, prasamsana. So when he saw someone doing very nicely, the Lord praised him very nice, Hari bol, Hari bol, very nice. But if he saw someone was not working to his satisfaction, he immediately chastised that person. No, it is not mentioned bhadsan, he did not uh chastise that person, he if he is not up to the liking of the Lord, kare pavitra bharsana. So the chastisement is pure, it is not bearing any grudge. It is not to put that other person down with such pure intent. In a very, very pure pavitra way, the Lord chastised that person. Oh, you're doing this, but if you do like this, you know, you should improve, correct, whatever. So Lord was doing it in a very, very beautiful way.
The Lord would say, you have done well, please teach this to others so that they may act in the same ways. So those who were doing well, Mahaprabhu was asking them, okay, you have learned well, now you teach others.
So you have become a, you have now become a good student, now you teach others.
Praise with heart, correct with grace, uplift the less skilled and keep the goal in place. That is what Mahaprabhu is doing in last few verses. He is praising, it is heartfelt, he is correcting, that is also heartfelt. It is nothing to do with a person as such, the goal is in the place. And that is why he is trying to help or uplift those who are not so skillfully doing. So that they feel uplifted and not dejected. Lord is not rejecting them, Lord is correcting them and helping them to come to the mark.
As soon as they heard Sri Chaitanya Mahaprabhu say this, everyone became ashamed. Thus, the devotees began to work with great attention because when uh for example, we love someone or a teacher of us whom we regard so much. And if he says, you know, and if he offers some correction, we may feel, oh, why I was not doing it properly. And then with great attention, they begin to uh start their service. Lead with balance. Let experts shine and learners rise. So we saw from Chaitanya Mahaprabhu, those who were doing well, he told him appreciated and told them to teach others. And those who could not do it well, the Lord personally showed what to do, how to do. And a very, in a very pure intent corrected them so that the learners rose.
They washed the jagamohan area and then the place where food was kept. All other places were also washed. In this way, the meeting place was washed. The entire yard, the raised sitting places, the kitchen and every other room. So with great attention and care, everything was cleansed.
After everything was thoroughly washed, a vashnava from Bengal. So here it's mentioned godia eka subhuti sarala, who was very intelligent, subhuti saral, simple. So one godia vashnava, vashnava from Bengal, who was intelligent and simple, came and poured water on the lotus feet of the Lord.
So uh actually the cleansing is over in the last verse and the time is ten fifteen. So we will stop here.
Only eleven.
Sorry, ten eleven. So we will stop here and hope that there were some learnings, there was some lesson in today's class which you would like to apply. So we are very interested in knowing that what is your learning which you will apply in your life. Not only what is your learning, but what is your learning which you will apply in your life and if you can leave it in the comment on the YouTube uh YouTube streaming where we are streaming, if you can write what you will apply and how you will apply, the detailed plan. So we will go, go through the comments and that would be a source of inspiration for us.
And others can share in the.
Everyone can share there and in the group. I mean, I am asking to share in the YouTube uh this comment also because then that will be there permanently. So that's an evidence which you will create. So happy Rathi Yatra, next week. Happy Gundicha Marjanam and happy Rathi Yatra. So Krishna willing, our next class, we will have Lord Chaitanya Mahaprabhu dancing in Rathi Yatra. So thank you all very much.